For the two days of March twenty twenty three to the Waukesha City Council. Well, everybody, a presentation right off the back of our twenty twenty two odds. Presentation for Tyler C is here to join us. Welcome Tyler.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna share your presentation for the new users and there we go.
Perfect. Awesome. So yeah, my name is Tyler C. I'm an audit manager at Apple and like you said, we're going to present the twenty twenty two financial statement. So I'll get right into it here. So what are we going over today is first of all, just the audit opinion and the audit results and then we'll get into the financial information. So I'll start with the general fund results as well as your other governmental funds. Well, we'll touch on the enterprise fund as well and end it off with some key performance indicators as well. So our responsibility as auditors is to issue on the city's financial. We are issuing an unmodified opinion to share on the city's financial statements, which is a clean audit opinion. So this is the opinion you would be striving for in your situation. As part of our audit, we also do some testing around internal controls as well as little compliance and we do issue some audit findings. This year, we don't have any real compliance issues that we are issuing, but we do have one internal control issue which I'll go over on the next slide. That internal control finding is the preparation of financial statements. This is a recurring finding for the city and basically what the finding comes down to is that we as your auditors are engaged in not only perform the financial statement audit, but we also draft a financial statement since that's technically an internal control finding. This is the common finding and like I said, it's recurring finding for the city of Waukesha and most cities of your size receive this internal control finding. So common finding. I'll also touch on prior year audit findings that were resolved. Last year, we had a finding for collateral coverage on the city's deposits, specifically on the Port Authority bank account. This audit finding is no longer finding because it's been resolved as twenty twenty two. So I just have an update on prior results. So moving into the financial results for the city, here we're first starting with the graph on the general fund's fund balance. So here what you're going to see is the the yellow bar shows the city's general fund budget from twenty nineteen into twenty twenty three. That black line shows the city's fund balance policy, which is to be at sixty percent of the following years' budget expenditures. And then the orange line there shows where the fund balance is at each year. So this year at the end of twenty twenty two, the city's general fund balance is fifty point seven percent of the following years' budget. So slightly below that, or ten percent below that fund balance policy for this year. Then continuing on, here we have a budget to actual for the year twenty twenty two. So on the left, you're going to see that final budget amounts. In the middle here, see the actual results. On the right, you see the variance of the final budget. The top line there, the revenues came in about two hundred thousand dollars above budget. Main reason for that budget variance is grant revenue. So the general fund, the arson parker revenue was recognized in twenty twenty two and that was unbudgeted. So that's had no reason for that. So the revenue variance there. And then also expenditures are about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars over the final budget in the general fund. Main department area is the public safety department, specifically fire expenses perhaps. One of the main variances that jumped out there in the general fund. So also there are some transfers in from water sewer fund and then the general fund also transferred out that a hundred and seventy two thousand dollar amount that was transferred on to the capital fund. So all in all, the fund balance decreased about ninety thousand dollars this year in the general fund. And then that one point seven million dollar amount is your ending general fund fund balance for the year. Now moving on here, we're just looking at kind of a high level overview of the main revenue sources of the general fund over the last three years. So here we're just looking at taxes, your governmental revenue, charging services and other revenue sources, your miscellaneous revenues, reimbursements, interest earnings, stuff like that. So not a lot to say there. I mean, the taxes are your main revenue source in general fund and overall pretty consistent year over year. Next slide here, same graph, but here we're looking at general fund expenditures broken out by departments the last three years, twenty twenty to twenty twenty two. One thing that kind of sticks out is twenty twenty two, that transfer out now is a lot bigger than the last couple of years. And again, that's just because you transferred about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars out of the general fund to support the capital fund, otherwise pretty consistent overall. Here's a quick graph highlighting the city's special revenue funds. So you have four special revenue funds and then the Port Authority component unit. Overall, these special revenue funds decreased about two hundred thousand dollars in fund balances this past year, mainly due to the project costs and the Port Authority. So like a lot of engineer G's and stuff like that this past year, otherwise very steady to other funds. Another slide here showing the capital project funds this time. City has five capital project funds. Overall, the capital project funds also decreased about two hundred thousand dollars. Main reason for that is the initial project cost for the athletic field in the twenty twenty three streets that occurred in twenty twenty two. Then this this slide is highlights your main capital improvement fund the last three years and just kind of shows the the fund balance level building up year over year. So you know, the main reason for it increased this year is that transfer from the general fund supporting it. So just kind of build them out reserved for future projects. Now debt service funds. The city has two debt service funds right now. So this slide just highlights the on the bottom of future debt service obligations for the next ten years. And then also shows just your two bonds and the cash available on those funds and one of those bonds, I'm sure, which as of now, twenty thirty is your last returning date on those on those bonds.
Just as an editorial, we're not, we're going to be filling in that with this future that we're taking on in the athletic field and industry and so. But this is why we're taking all those projects as long as we're carrying debt.
So now we're moving into the enterprise funds. So this first slide goes over the water fund. So on this top graph here, you're just going to see the operating activity, operating receipts in the orange, then your operating costs in the yellow and then debt payments in the black there. The bottom half of the slide, it shows your cash balance compared with a what we call a minimum target balance, having an industry standard target. So here we're using the following year's debt service obligation plus half of your operating costs as that target balance. And as you can see here, the last four years, a positive trend of the water fund is building a cash balance up and above that target. And now super fund, same exact format to this slide as well. So you're going to see the operating receipts as well as the debt payments and operating costs. The the thing to point out here is the is the minimum target dropped so much this past year because the PFA loan was paid off in twenty twenty two. So kind of your target balance is is below where your cash balance is at in this super fund because of that debt being paid off. Quick slide highlighting the total cash that the city holds on the loan for four million dollars at the end of the year. So the decrease from last year mainly due to the project costs being going over. So that's a main reason for the cash increase this past year. So now here we're looking at key performance indicators. So these are where we compare the city of Waukesha to peer groups. So the peer groups we're looking at are other cities in Waukesha County and then class four cities. So class four cities are all the cities in the state with a population of at least ten thousand, so ten thousand and below, or sorry, of ten thousand below, not at least ten thousand. But first graph, we are looking at tax rate. So the black line is Waukesha, then the yellow bar is Waukesha County and the orange bar is class four cities. So when it comes to tax rates, Waukesha is a little bit below the average for Waukesha County, a kind of right at that average Waukesha County, and then above class four cities. And then tax per capita, here we're looking at above average for class four cities and cities in Waukesha. I know it's been a discussion topic in the past, so some things to consider, you know. Class four cities again are states of ten thousand or below. So Waukesha is about twenty five hundred. So the peer group, you know, you're looking at some states with higher population. Another factor also you can look at as well is just businesses in town and the amount of businesses in town and just how, you know, business, they pay taxes as well, but they're not necessarily, you know, part of the population. So just a couple of other factors to consider when we're looking at the tax per capita number, kind of analyzing that. Here we're looking at debt now. So again, same format for the graphs. This is just your outstanding debt per capita. Of course, that's been going down these last years since that's been paid off. So probably a little below the average for Waukesha County as well as well below the average really for class four cities. And then the other one is just debt service expenditures. Oh, here we go. Yeah, there's another one there, but you can keep going. Because it's not the same picture as all the averages for your debt service expenditures in general. And then current expenditures for capita as well as capital expenses for capita. So current expenses, just all your operating expenses outside of your debt payments and then your capital projects. And how do you compare to those peer groups? And then your capital expenses per capita, that's going to be volatile year over year. It really depends on what your project costs are. So twenty twenty two, for instance, was a busier year than like the last two years. So volatile one there. Yeah, that's my last slide. So open up for any questions or comments about the audit.
Well, I'll just make a few notes. Some of where, you know, I'd like to kind of improve our performance in terms of budgeted to actual. But we we just had a few budgeting mistakes, which meant, you know, basically we charged a lot lower property tax rate, but we had some unexpected expenditures. We went over those this year. We tried to paint a fix a few of those things. Police didn't kind of just digling into the police holiday pay had been unbudgeted. That was pretty major. And then we had, we weren't, didn't realize how, just kind of took out the fire retention aid when that was an obligation. So I talked to the auditors about it. They just said this year, continue to budget conservatively. We don't necessarily need to do anything special other than to just budget conservatively. And then, of course, we have a lot of outstanding debt because we've been paying ahead on the Bard's terminal project and the Port Authority and then the street project and the athletic field that this year, as we borrow and basically transfer that back into some long term debt, we'll be able to improve that. And I think we explained that and they understood that. So that's, that kind of is what stood out to me a little bit. And then I was happy to see that our capital improvement balance has gone up because we worked hard on improving that balance. And that was, I think, a recommendation for probably years.
Any other questions for Tyler or comments? I don't have any here. Thank you. Obviously, we always know we can judge you and.
Yep.
Of course.
Thanks for having me.
Be with us.
No motion to approve the unguarded.
Thank you. That's in that item?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do that now. Thanks for noting that action. So we do need to have a motion if it's up with the two of who are you twenty twenty two odds?
You're true.
Oh, second.
First you're done, second, we need sort of the second. Hearing that, all those invaders say aye.
Aye.
We have Dean online.
Aye.
Dean, I'm sorry, we didn't allow Tyler to take role call. Thank you, Tyler. We have a member present. All right. Any one opposed? Thank you so much. All right. And now we will have any comment. It says members in public here, please, if you have not done so before, don't feel uncomfortable. Just join us at the podium where we can definitely see and hear you. Just come right up. You can silence the sheet, indicate your place of residence and share whatever you might with council. Let's to see comments limited to about two or three minutes, just so we can stay on track. Do we have any public comments from here in city hall? Otherwise, I'll. See if anyone in the audience. All right. Anyone online who just made a public comment? Sorry. Okay, hearing that, we'll just enjoy your presence. And of course, just so you know, if we get an agenda item that you came for and you don't wish to stay for the meeting, we aren't offended if you can't baby in here. I didn't say that last time. We had some people who really just wanted to be here for the consent agenda and then joined us for about two hours. So if we've covered either the top of the interest and you need to leave, you don't need to worry about that. That's just fine with us. Any changes or additions to the agenda by members of staff or council?
Yes. Can we go ahead and swap your order of four or five in general business?
So first, it's got the phasing of the new building approach and then the second authorize the fire chief. Gotcha. Yep. So. Yeah, small mining, mining ordinance. That first, first, we have to do that here. Okay, I'm going to state this so it's clear for the minutes. So we're going to take small mining ordinance secondary, which is currently general business six, ten six. We're going to make that the first item of general business. Just swap it with the minor cloud rule or just bump it down. Bump it down. We're going to make that first and bump everything else down. We're going to switch the the phased approach for the new building with the fair chief contract. And then I'd like to add the last item to general business, which is just from discussion about the issue we heard raised by street commission with regards to parking concerns. And give some context for that as a bigger, as a bigger discussion. And I think we'll have Christian to join us for that. So we'll just make that last. Or maybe we should make that second. Anything. We will, we'll make that last. Okay, so hearing those changes, any other changes? I'm sure I will mess that up. So I'd love for anybody to poke me if I do it in the order of printed. Okay. With that, we would have just a few. You know, I have a lot to discuss, but there has been so much collaboration in the last month. It's kind of making my head spin, which is a really good thing. We're working so routinely on some of the things that we've been talking about for many years. It's really great to see. I, the days right for council are always kind of busy for me and trying to catch up with city staff and make sure I understand what we need to cover. But this is record breaking, I think. There's been a lot of legislative advocacy. Carolyn's going to talk about that a little bit. We had a visit from Alan Keith or is it Keith Allen? I think it's Keith Allen from just our, the district outreach director from Congressman Brad Stensted's office dropped by today, which is great. I welcomed them to do that. Sure enough, they came on a really busy day, but we'll take them when we can get them. So it was great to have Caroline and Tyler and I able to help him see some of the issues we're facing. He seemed to get our highway sixty reroute issue right away. He's familiar with Waukesha, understands that transportation problem as it as it exists. So really good to have a connection there and we'll continue to make, make our case for we missed the congressional, the opportunity for congressional request. We aren't on their contact list yet, but this today's bid has solved that. So look forward to working with them in the future. Successful meeting with the township boards, the ambulance service. Thank you to everybody who could do that and thank you, Ryan, for your leadership and all your staffs involved in our city hall staff. This is good to be talking about facilities. I appreciate leadership saying, hey, let's just let you think about this in a bigger way. So I look forward to those agenda items and and action on those. Housing study will be presented and it's, I think, I would call it final draft form to the watch committee tomorrow. If you haven't been to a housing committee before, but you'd like to attend either in person or online, that would be welcome. Just kind of see the fruit of that effort so far. There's a lot of housing strategies for Waukesha to consider, more than is comfortable for Caroline. And I would feel the same way if I were the administrator. But I think what we're going to do is prioritize the ones that we sort of can get behind and think are most doable and with another criteria. Anyway, we're going to put some prioritization to those tomorrow and anybody who joins can can weigh in, you know, in the discussion. The materials maybe won't get to in advance of the meeting, but you'll understand what we're looking at. So that's the news. Thank you to the street commission for allowing me to come this morning and revisit this issue on parking. It's I had a lightbulb moment. This is a bigger issue. We're talking about it like it's a small thing, but that's actually good that we get to a more planful discussion about parking in general because we have the fully revitalized riverfront. So the timing is good to discuss that. The library has had so many programs. It's just, I was very sad to miss a couple of this last weekend. We were with family in cities. But they have an art show. It's very, if you had kids in the WK schools, you've probably gone to this. It's a really fun event. The WK art programs K through K through twelve, right? I think there's kindergarten and work there. Anyway, elementary through high school has an art show. It's already open. So if you want to stop into the library, it's on, but there's an opening tomorrow at five P M. I'll be last kid there. It's really fun. Tomorrow, we're starting in earnest. So I'm going to be there. I don't know if John can make it. Work with Waukesha County. They're pursuing an age friendly initiative to become network with AARP and work on age friendly planning. And they were happy that John and I could participate or had any desire to participate, which I definitely do. So we'll hear more about that tomorrow too. And it seems impossible that the first soar with the Eagles post COVID actually occurred and this occurred. It was very successful despite some weather. So congratulations to everybody who made that happen. I think a lot of volunteers assisted with, in addition to the staff, the National Eagles staff. So that's it for me. We'll go to committee reports. Brian, utilities?
Utilities, we discussed the dormant flat in the Cooley Way flat, which we'll just get to in our agenda items. I did both flats, so I'll just go ahead and recuse and represent both the clients here because neither of them are here. So I'll just act in there. Yeah, that about it.
Quarter three.
Port Authority met last month, third Tuesday of every month, paid a lot of bills since we did not meet in in March, or no, in February, excuse me. So that was painful. We had discussion with respect to the HVA secret, and apparently even talked quite a bit about all this. Why we don't steal the energy from them. Barge terminal update, we spoke at length about that. Childcare. The grants program is wrapped up and we'll see the final report of that should be done.
It's done.
That was very successful. I think we we hit forty new slots in Congress because of that. And we need more, but I think those were really pretty powerful. So thank you staff for all that everybody did to that. And continually reviewing our revolving loan fund program and researching additional sources for that. So that's really where we're at.
I'm just going to go to Tony because I like to go finally. Then I'll surprise anybody who go.
Good evening, everyone. Heartboard did not meet last month, but streets met today. We had downtown sidewalk store removal discussion. And kind of what we're looking at investigating a little bit is trying to figure out how we can get property owners to clear their snow off the sidewalks while we're doing store removal instead of happening at nine, seven o'clock in the morning and we've already done cleanup and creates a mess. So we're going to investigate that a little bit. We did talk about the Dorney plan, which is approved. Cooley Way plan was approved. We talked a little bit more and the mayor helped us with the Lawrence Boulevard discussion. And the the group elected pre-commissioner, so Brandon, she was our pre-commissioner.
There's a lesson we learned from that.
Yeah.
He looked, he had to take a phone call and let the river go back. Elect him. All right.
We did not meet. Our next meeting is next Tuesday.
All right. Very good. Anything you want to fire that you want to report there? I'm just here for you and you're a Jedi in the market. Sounds good. All right, please. Okay. Very good. So then we'll hear from from Darren about his hires, which is very exciting.
I'll make a chore here. But yeah, we got four new guys that came on here in January. We were able to get them enrolled in a class seven days after they got put on. So they started a class overnight and they did seventy five percent of the hybrid. The rest of them over there doing their control burns and their their training they need to. And they just all, I think, next weekends are test out on hazmat. Otherwise, they test it out on player, player one, two, and this will complete their course. So already at this time of year, we're usually it takes a year to get in these classes and get them through them and it's lengthy. But we actually got four guys coming on this before the summer. It's kind of nice. So we got them guys on board. One is Neil Lowes. He works, he's dispatcher out there, lives locally and it's nice to have a dispatcher on their department, good and bad. Drew Gilbertson, of course, he has been living in town all his life and works out of sand and gravel. Along with Sean Riston, Sean lives on the prairie, but he also works out of sand and gravel and sand gravel has been excellent with the fire department for supporting them for leaving there to go to calls and et cetera. So it's nice to have a couple of guys that are local for more day call. And then Eric Fabry, which he lives down there by me and works up a eagle for her homes or whatever it is. And yeah, he's available evenings and and nights. And so far, it's been real good. The train's ramped up. We've been training pretty hard here the last couple of months and we're going to train again with some more water rescue tomorrow night. Or Thursday night, training, regular training Wednesday night. And yeah, try to get these guys rolled in as quick as we can. Fire department's had a couple of bad calls in the last, you know, forty five days and we're dealing with that a little bit. So yeah, a lot of things going on, but otherwise, yeah, I'm proud to have the guys on and I'll get a picture tomorrow night.
Super. Brian, I skipped you. I'm so sorry. Anna's condition of sharing.
Always.
Yeah.
We didn't have too much.
We have a big report from you, which is.
Yeah. The report I gave out to everybody, it was not as detailed as I would have liked, just because of when I started, but I tried to do as much as I could. We had one of our program staff resign. We were doing somebody for that destiny. And so hopefully with the ad hoc community plan, then we'll hopefully get them hired either by the end of this week or next week. Just the townships, we're still working on that. We're trying to get a motion for our township board formation so we can get back some of the township's already done before the review for that. So you know, other than that, that's all we did.
Yeah, thank you for the report. Written reports are great because they keep us informed now that they're great reference materials. Sometimes I remember I've been, I've told, been told something, but I can't remember it. So we really appreciate all the work that goes into those, including the weekly, monthly updates are very, really, really helpful. So thank you to everybody, including public works for those. And I even usually elate of homeworks. All right. So with that, we'll have Karen to report.
Yeah, I'll just add that one of the things that was suggested, I think, by Tim is that we manage track that business analysis, not lose track of it. So in his report, there's a nice graphic where we're at with the different recommendations with the report. So we don't lose track of that. So that's there. People want to take a look at it. For me, Highway sixty reroute, I just pulled it up. This is our bill that's out there. I guess it was introduced to the Transportation Finance and Policy Committee. And that got the attention of some DOT staff and they're going to give us a few recommendations on how to tweak that. Right now, it's really on the table is last year's bonding bill. It caught up and that is our downtown PFA line. So we are anxiously watching that. I understand it's with the Senate and it's not killed, but it's kind of what it wouldn't see at all sitting there. That's a very important bill for us that gets passed. Once that is is done, then I think there could be thinking towards our bill and Representative Altonor, I spoke with her today. This is one of her top priorities advocating for this on our behalf. So I'm just excited about the bill being out there that we can all look at and follow the bill just like, you know, high school civics. So the Barge terminal, the corners are here. Hello, we have finalized negotiations. So basically where we're at is our attorney, we kind of had a meeting of the minds as to what's going in with our agreement with the cars. And now it's really in Mike's hand, our attorney, to just put that in legal language. And then Tyler and I are working on a federal grant for the Barge terminal. And it's a little complicated, but we're going to try it and recycle what's been done before. And the grants, we are fully committed to projects and I'm starting a waiting list and I included a list of recipients in my notes. And then for the athletic field and the downtown street project, that is out to bid as of today. If you want to have a friend or anybody, look at. as of today. If you want to have a friend or anybody, um, look at that, you can just go to BoltonMake.com. Uh, that's not it. What is it? Well, anyways. Hyphen, okay, yeah, okay, there, there it is. Um, there it is, okay. And then just go to, um, clients and then bids. Clients, bid documents, and are, and then you just search for Wausau and where both of those are in here. So if anybody, you know, wants to send this along to someone, uh, they know it was published in the paper today, and you can look for this bid right there on their site. Just ensure you have the hyphen in there.
BoltonMake.com.
Yeah, yeah. And this quest, the, and I understand is used by many contractors, but if you're like me, you're not really logged in, so that's the best way to access that. And then on the Wausau Kella, the multi-use trail, we had a good meeting with stakeholders. And we're waiting on a final, um, final feasibility report. And then we're gonna work on potentially a joint board strategy with Redfield Township, Wausau, Kellag, and Wausau County all kind of, um, at the table. Another linked us with another firm, kind of talking about their strategy, so it certainly can be done. Our goal is to get as much as possible, ninety-nine percent, uh, maybe at least for sure, at least eighty percent funded by grants. So that's just our goal, is try to get it. And, um, do you want to do the announcement about our new staff person, Joe? New, yes, new police officer, yes. And that's it? Yes.
Uh, yeah, so we, um, it's definitely a, a, a tough time for us right now with the lack of people out there, but uh, we had hoped for the best and worried about the worst, but we, uh, we got very lucky. We, um, we, uh, our police commission went through, uh, the couple of applications we got, and one of those was, uh, uh, Chad Moyer, who, uh, had worked for us, um, at the start of his career, went over to the county, uh, he's an eighteen-year veteran. Um, and and was looking for a change and, and wanted to come back here, so it was a it was kind of a no-brainer, um, on our commissions, and, um, we now uh, have a local guy, uh, lives in town, kids at the school, coaches, um, it was just a really nice find for us, and um, we're glad to have him. He brings a lot to the table as far as, uh, experience and and, uh, he'd be a great help to us.
Thank you, Joel. I should say that Tyler and Caroline highly diminished the effort involved in the resubmission of this grant, so I really thank them for this. It's a terrible learning curve to try to get federal money, and I still try to help as much as I can. Tyler and I listened in on a call with the funding agency uh, about why we scored, but we didn't receive funds before, and it's, it's always felt like you need a secret decoder ring to understand what they're talking about, so I really appreciate you guys going back, and then I'm sure you'll learn a lot, and it's a lot of work, so thank you for that. All right, and with that, uh, we have a consent agenda, which is quite large. Um, we have the police commission hired for our new police officer, as Joe just described. The holiday decorations order, that's gonna be managed by Linda Adam, um, the painting hope for city hall. Our police school liaison officer agreement for officer events, our ad hoc personnel committee meeting, and I forget what that's about, um.
So when they hired the EMT.
That's right. Because of what Ryan shared about, of our EMT hire, and our, um, ambulance annual report, which Ryan shared with us, the leak in Minnesota City's liability and coverage waiver form, our April warrants, our city council minutes from three seven, uh, the liquor license for, I forget again, what's for. Thanks, thank you. Yeah, and, and a lot of different, right, that's awesome. And then the peddler is transient merchant for the, um, pregameers barbecue. With that, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, we approve, seven.
We have a first from Jeff, and a second from Brian. Any further discussion? Always a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Dean, we'll give you a chance.
Aye.
Any, uh, anyone opposed? All right, consent agenda passes. We don't have a public hearing tonight. Under general business, we're gonna take the small night ordinance first. This is the second read. Um, so we've seen this before, and we have here's loading, Tim.
So just, uh, second reason.
We didn't need a motion. We ended before, so as you recall, um, this is the uh, ordinance, and our manual exhibits is a description of that. We have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
We have a motion from John and a second from Gene. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any opposition? All right, thank you. So that is set. All right, now we're gonna do the regular order until we get to four nine. Okay, so our man, mine and flat approval for Cooley Way, um, Mayor Bert Dangworth. And as, um, Tony mentioned, this was approved in Streets and has been approved in Utilities, correct?
Yeah.
Do you want to represent the way you described?
Yeah.
Share this with us? So Brian's gonna, um, refrain from voting.
Two minutes, huh?
Yeah, do you want to share?
Okay, so, yeah, um. My firm and I, our engineer staff, Christie and our fire engineering staff have all worked together on this at length, and, uh, I think we got it all worked out. And so, um, there was a, a last minute uh, request in Utilities, um, just quickly to explain, um, we had, we had redone the Utilities over and over and over, different scenarios. And, um, the client had petitioned to do some sanitary that was, was linked together, um, which had allowed in our ordinance with a application to Utilities by linking two services. Sure. That's the mid, or that's the maximum, um. With recommendation from staff and then a vote from the Utilities Commission, they voted to, to deny it. Um, and the engineer recommended we get rid of that completely. Um, I actually agree with that, just from experience. Because we want everyone's services to connect directly to the main, so they're not dependent on each other. So like, if someone has a problem, someone else's sewer in the basement's not getting backed up, so. That was communicated to the applicant. No issues, it's worked out, and, uh, we're just finalizing that design. And, um, so we can approve the plat. And we, we had recommended approving it with the um, condition that those updates are made. Um, because what you're seeing right now isn't, there'll be some minor tweaks to it. So I, I'll have to add a drainage utility is not on the sell side, so. But other than that, just questions?
Good, any questions? I mean, we can, we have staff recommendation here, but any general questions for Brian?
We're maybe also gonna have separate online, instead of, instead of shared.
Correct, yeah, all separate.
So I'll be addressing the parkland dedication. Christie should, okay. Chris, do you want to speak?
Um, am I unmuted?
Good, we can hear you, thanks.
Oh, you can hear me, okay, thanks. Um, just to add to Brian's comments, too, to go back to the, the, uh, staff report, we can, we can eliminate condition number four.
Okay.
So that was the, the shared utility agreement, um, that we needed to get drafted by an attorney, since we're no longer doing that, we're good to go. Um, yeah, if you wanted to look at the detail of the, the development agreement, was really under, under a lot of a lot of revision this last week, but our parkland dedication fee is actually point one acres per residential unit based on the fair market value of the homes, and we're reviewing two final plats tonight, and you'll see that we have two very different parkland dedication fees, based on the fact that the fair market value for Cooley Way was exponentially more expensive than the fair market value of the agricultural property that the Dornicks are proposing to subdivide, and the way our park, our subdivision ordinance is crafted, we had to use the fair market value or what they purchased their, their lots, acreages for, and those are just very different numbers. Um, in the last week, I've done some research to try to find out what is kind of a standard from other communities, so I looked up, uh, Plainview, Lake City, Zambroda, and Rochester, just to kind of give us some sort of a level set of what other people are asking. And the, their two communities were, were asking for seven hundred and twenty dollars per lot. Two communities were about nine hundred and fifty dollars a lot, and to give you guys a sense of scale there, again, in our, in our memo, um, based on current ordinance, this is thirty-eight hundred a lot. So, or we're really, we're really significantly above that, so I would recommend um, having an edit to parkland dedication fee of something between the seven hundred dollars and the nine hundred dollars that I found from other community, and a follow-up to ask the planning commission to edit and review that text, so that we fall more in line with other surrounding communities.
So this is the area that the developer did have an issue with, was nineteen thousand dollars in parkland dedication, that would be upfront cash added to the cost of developing five residential homes. So that's, uh, and today is that, that's the main area of contention, and then the other issue was having to escrow his amount. Is he okay with that, or is, is when we, he talked to Wendy and I yesterday, he would still prefer to be billed as those costs come in, and that's the cost of the engineers to go out and make sure everything's correctly graded. Um, and I think staff's position is escrowing it, getting that money upfront, definitely puts the city in a stronger position than having to bill and wait for them to pay us that. But.
Well, we, we had a, we had a good conversation with Jason, um, this, this morning, and I really think what we, well, at least, and I don't know, Brian can talk to, uh, escrow versus bills, but we're gonna work with Jason directly to try to to try to correspond for observation fees, so that they're as closely related to when the work is actually gonna be done, to eliminate any sort of, you know, go out there to view the site when nothing got done costs. Um, so I think really, we're working towards really, really good communication, so those observation, those engineer construction observation numbers are also as close to just exactly what we needed for the oversight needed as possible. But Brian, did, do you have an answer for escrow versus bill from Jason?
Yeah, I, I would advocate that we, we don't make these local guys escrow, um. I went to planning commission for the Fitzgerald plat. Um, I think his escrow numbers for the city to hold his money was like thirty-six thousand dollars. And so that's just his liquid cash that the city would hang on to and not gather the interest, you know, held up, he can't use it. Um, and the planning commission voted to allow him to just be billed for those costs and pay them at that time. Um, and so by the time that got to council, that was already handled by planning. Um, for, for this type of a plat, planning didn't have to to do this, so then, so we're looking at it independently now.
Yeah, so the way it's currently crafted, it's escrow, just to be clear, so that it can, it can be changed.
I think if you had a developer from out of town that was coming in to do a development, sell it, and get out of town, you know, that's one thing about escrow. Um, when we have these local guys who are pretty rooted around here, I can feel like we need to, to tie up their cash.
We can be consistent with what's with Fitzgerald.
We gotta be consistent with the chair.
Yeah, I would agree with you, but I'm pretty consistent with that, that's, I'm fine with that.
So we gotta fix this parkland fee, too. We'll do that now, do we?
Yes.
So, if I were to write, Christie, your recommendation was again, between like seven hundred and fifty and nine twenty or something?
Yeah, seven, seven twenty to nine fifty, yeah. We'd put it in line with the other four communities.
Just for reference, on the Dornick Plat, because of the difference in valuation, using the current formula, um, they only had to pay a thousand dollars total in parkland for the two lots, just because the value of the land was so much less, um. So just to give you a, a, a frame of reference for what they're paying, and then, um, Christie gave you the numbers of comparables from like the other towns, too, so. Um, there's really no mathematical way to do it, I'd say, just, just like she said, a number, a number in there per lot.
And are you looking for, for council to provide feedback on somewhere within that range, or did, does that make better sense of that sort of planning?
Um, I would prefer council, it, this, the development agreement is only reviewed by you guys, so, um, pro- provide a number that seems reasonable for this particular project, um, so they can move forward with their, their development agreement and get this thing approved tonight, and then we will go back. Planning Commission actually work on text as we move forward.
Okay, we have, we, we can have some discussion, and then we'll see a motion for that particular fact, that'll be a part of the revised agreement. I heard Jesse mentioned it, any thoughts on that? I mean, that's fine with me.
Yeah, um.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I was saying fifty, between seven fifty and nine fifty, or whatever, I heard fire.
Do I make a motion?
Sure, I'm making a motion for that.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Jeff, a second. And John, any further discussion on nine hundred? For the parkland contribution, all right, uh, hearing no further, I should say, all, all those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, oh, Steve?
Aye.
Dean, if you can't hear this, please call her, okay? Um, opposed? Great, all right, so we have that item handled. And now, I was listening carefully, but there was something else you wanted us to address in the agreements on the escrow. Okay, so we, uh, either act on, we can act on that separately.
Yeah, probably should, right?
Discussion about the consistency with Fitzgerald Plat.
Yes, so stay consistent, I make a motion that we do not acquire escrow ups.
Who would first do the second?
I'll say it.
All right, I heard Cora's second, so, John first, I heard second from Tim. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm saying.
We have one extension from Brian, lovely. All right, very good, and now, um, Julie, we just have the actual approval of the plat, right, because it, it comes to us rather than planning, it's a minor plat.
I'll make a motion to approve, with the three conditions highlighted.
Very good, we stricken, we stricken the fourth condition, which is no longer needed, uh, we have a motion to approve. We have a second from Dean. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
I'm saying.
And we have second, another extension, very good. All right, thanks, Christie, for helping us with that. And Brian? All right, now, on the similar item, kind of foreshadowed some of the issues. Uh, this is the Dillon Drive Dornick minor plat approval. And we have another staff report, um, anything Christie or Brian you'd like to share on this item? We have our, uh, similar staff recommendations, staff finding that proposed sub, in compliance, um. But you're kind of forecasting if any other subdivision occur in this private access and utility easement, it's recommended the city Wausau require that Dillon Drive being platted as a public road. Anything further for council to consider, Christie?
Um, I, I have nothing. This is a pretty straightforward, more of a rural level, uh, two-point-five acre lot, two plat lot. Pretty straightforward.
Some discussion about that, I think everybody understands that with this density, um, it says, as Christie described, we have two recommended conditions, one is that the Dornick subdivision easement exhibit be recorded along with the plat, and the parkland dedication fee of, in this case, it says one, one thousand dollars, must be paid prior to reporting the plat. We have to have actually debate that same consideration, and we best.
Was it the parkland?
Yeah.
I think this one was more in line, so I don't, I don't think anything needed to be done here.
Very good, all right.
Um, just one more note, there are utilities here, so there's no development agreement, nothing to address there, um, it's over a thousand feet away from the nearest utility, so per ordinance, well accepted or allowed, so, yeah.
With that, do we have anybody which, which make a motion of the already recommended conditions? Dean, I heard you're first, anyone on second? Jeff would make a second. Any affirmative government?
Um, just question, do we want a condition there about if it's if it's subdivided again, we want that to be, is something about the public road?
Can they sub, can they subdivide it again, given it's selling? What is it, kind of?
No, they, those lots are minimum size for zoning, so it would be someone else developing around them that you would need to do the public road, which could be put in on their condition of approval at that time, right?
All right, with that, any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, the aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Thank you, Dean.
And all saying.
All right. Super. John? All right, you're good. And now we're gonna put these two. So we're gonna talk about the phasing approach for a new building. Oh, flood update. We would die in here flood update, of course. It's snow still coming into the northeast here.
That's all.
Everybody wants to know what I've heard about flooding.
Yeah.
So I kind of did a little bit of digging into it today to see what was, what was kind of happening around the area with the. County emergency managers and um. National weather across and um. Little bit with the core. Everybody's kind of quiet right now. Things are. Um, they're forecasting, I think, twelve next week at on Tuesday. Which will kick up the water, but twelve for us is pretty, is all manageable. Um, so when it gets to about thirteen, thirteen five is when we start to see like water in the overpass and. Um, slippery just gets affected a little bit. So. I think for now, the only we do is sit back and wait, see what this warm weather does this weekend and. And starts uh kicking some of the water down from up north. And, um, yeah. Few years back, there were, there's a lot more hype up than there is now. It seemed pretty quiet right now, so. I think there's. There's room for a lot of this water to go. But. We get sixty, seventy days and some rain and things could change real quick. So all I can do is say I'll keep up on um. If things start to, one thing I've been about flooding around here is we always have a couple of days or a week notice that's gonna start to come up. You know, dangerously, so we can get together and meet and and deal with it as it comes. So I kind of thought of toning stuff a little bit, so, yeah, it's. All we can do is sit back and wait. Uh, they're saying in a couple of weeks from now, but we'll know this probably be the. The the biggest effect.
Yeah.
But uh. Well, like you said, sixty, seventy days and. Couple of days of rain thrown in there, we could be, we could be a different story, so. But um, yeah. So all I got is on that.
As much as we want spring, we should wish for spring, not summer.
Yeah, I I agree. I think it's gonna, according to the forecast, we're gonna turn on and get some. There's a lot of snow north.
Yeah.
But the good thing about, there is a good thing about some of the north, a lot of it is flowing into the Zit River, a lot of those. And a lot of them lakes up there suffer a lull. So, you know, it only, it could be good for a spot of them, but we'll uh see what happens.
Thank you, Darren.
Yeah.
Now we're gonna plug these two. So we will talk first about a discuss, uh, to discover the phasing approach for a, what we're describing. Multi, multi-function ambulance garage. Uh, and eventually the whole EMS. They have a great summary on this item in the agenda, link in the agenda for anybody in the public who wants to read it, but Brian's gonna. Kind of share the images for the, with that thing.
So, um, this kind of started before. I started, um, there was a talk to combine ambulance and fire department. Um, back in two thousand and one, almost, we spent five hundred dollars with O W R. Um, to do some drawing, the architect stuff for combined fire and EMS building. Um. After talking there and once I started, it was. We both had kind of different ideas on what was put in place in that kind of, um, really been. Uh, meet what the department really needed. Um, we both had different needs and long-term um visions. Uh, well, I can say long-term vision, but we we have different immediate needs and, um, I think we we both agree that. What was planned in that architecture then, um, wasn't what our immediate needs were. Um. So looking at our. Currently ambulance garage, um, and what needs to be done. I don't have any numbers set forth on how much it would cost to. Make that building, what it would need, um. To last into the future. Um, there's a lot of needs that would need to be done. Um, we're desperate on storage. Uh, we only have one bathroom with uh the makeup of recruit, you know, that's not very practical. Um. The overall not use of um separate space. Uh, for when we try to hold a class, if you have the um crew members there, uh, they have to walk through. The class to go to the bathroom. Uh, it's just, it's not good setup. And if, I think in my personal opinion, if we went to try to retrofit. That building, um, it's going to be, I don't know if that number's four hundred or five hundred thousand that's in our capital improvement. For retrofitting of our building. And I just think that, um, they would. The city would be better served that long-term instead of spending that money to try to put a baby in that building. Um, it would be more financially responsible to look at what we can do um with a combined building. Uh, it's. Kind of been become a. Uh, something that is a kind of recurring around, um. The country in Minnesota too, where they're combining city campuses, police, fire, and a city hall. Uh, all into one building. That creates a lot of, you know, we have all these different facilities right now. All of our buildings are, you know, the pool. The city hall, fire, and those are older buildings. Um, so it's saving energy and stuff. And getting all like one big, um, building versus adding a bunch of separate ones. I did go on the quotes just for what it would cost to get plans to redo our building. Uh, O W R requoted us forty seven hundred extra dollars to, um, to input that what it would cost to redo. Or add on to the ambulance garage. And then Brunnen gave us a quote for forty two hundred just for the zip facility. And then a full quote of twenty two thousand seven hundred dollars for a full year building study. Um, which includes picking a spot for a potential building, um, and looking at everything we need. Uh, Brunnen builds a hundred-year buildings, um, with precast six thousand psi concrete. Um. So we, I think, we're better, once we look at the future versus the current, I think that. Uh, you know, we can spend five hundred dollars now, or five hundred thousand dollars now, and then. In five, ten years, we're spending more money because it's not meeting our needs and, uh, with the other means of the city buildings. Um, I think, you know, taking, worked at a bigger picture, planning long-term versus. Brushing into something, um, just because we're moving right now is. You know, working ahead a little bit versus just doing what we're doing.
Well, I mean, you, um, just have operated a second on city hall. Or just maybe that's one of the, I'm sorry, there's two lists. Yeah, I've gone that for two plus here.
I mean, we we know, you know, the building was built in the fifties. Solid concrete walls. Uh, we got some plumbing that. That the pipes are rusted off and we can't even get in the walls to fix them. Uh, we got E D A issues with the bathroom. Uh, we got security issues here, you know, do we want to put in bulletproof glass? Do we want to put block up here? Do we want to add on in addition? To create a separate entrance for security coming through, which we talked to the safety uh committee several times. So I mean, that can be, you know, we could spend fifty to seventy five thousand dollars up here, but it's worth it. Um. I just don't know. I, the ambulance building down there, you know, obviously we gotta do the rough. I mean, that's, it's not gonna cost that much, but that building will probably get resold or reused, whether, no matter what we do. But if you're gonna save five hundred to seven hundred thousand dollars to building down there, you might as well just. Put the money, invest it somewhere else, different location across the street or something. Is that? It just doesn't make sense for me for rehabbing. You know, that building down there too. So we kept thinking, okay, so what's the use of this afterwards? Is it a community center? Or what with the athletic field or something? I. I don't know how much it can be changed, but just some ideas. So like, we're gonna plan for, you know, in the next five years, maybe we should look at. You know, doing everything. Instead of sticking. Money in here and and. That's where we left off. Kind of looking at you, you offer some thoughts and recommendations of.
So I'll talk a little bit about the cost. So in our. In our discussion, some thought were city hall, ambulance, fire, with police being planned for in the future. Um, Darren's feedback there was that. He feels that with just this additional storage, that can meet your needs for what the next ten years, if it got longer.
Yeah.
And so then we discussed, well, it's phase one, city hall plus ambulance, and then. Phase two being at an undetermined amount in, you know, fifteen plus years, if that maybe save us uh money. In terms of financing, you know, I'll always have an eye on where we're at and where money is tight. Um, we have what is available to us, is this half percent sales tax. It might need to be approved by the legislature, but I think they're trying to work to make that easier. Um, so Tyler got estimates and two years ago, that was estimated to be about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, and that would be a half percent. Sales tax on all the visitors would be kind of nice. Um, and then there's some USDA financing that allows for like a forty-year amortization with. The lowest federal rates available. So I haven't put any numbers um to it, but obviously that is gonna be, that's the thing foremost on our mind with all the products we have. How are we gonna afford it? Um, what I guess another question for consideration is. You know, do we just, we don't know until we know the cost, you know, so I don't have a number to give Mike who bonnie. Um, and then get into complications. Then there is the bonding money, but obviously we have this as our other. Bonding priority and beyond that, not aware of a lot of other funding sources towards this. So obviously financing the product is the thing that has probably prevented us. From thinking the short-term band aid approach for so long. Um, but. We, um, would, we thought maybe the next first step is in twenty twenty-four, we least allocate for some planning dollars towards it. Um, and then go from there. Um, but I think. Too, just saying this out loud, the sooner I can get Mike to start adding it to our capital plan with some assumptions, probably the better. Um, but yes, it's tough. I mean, we've got streets, we have utilities, and it's all mind, mind-boggling numbers, notwithstanding our buildings. Well, our buildings are gonna go away and the needs that they face are only going to increase, so it won't be something we can push down the road. Much further than now. So I think the moment is now to decide, you know, the approach. I, you know, appreciated the presentation that, you know, was invited just to kind of give us a perspective on what what co-located facilities look like and where the cost efficiencies are. They're always gonna tell you that, but the reality is. There's not a cheaper option. I mean, you're you're, you know, renovating consistently, renovating existing buildings that were never meant to probably last for this use. This long is not gonna be, it's not gonna be a a long-term cost saving. I think the other case they made, which. Means a lot is, you know, in terms of the investment of equipment that we have within these buildings and the necessity of this, our service, our EMS service. Do we want buildings that. Barely protect that investment, or do we want buildings that protect that investment for the long term and the future investment in equipment? And services. I mean, our I T is only gonna become more costly. All of the equipment involved in EMS is only gonna become more costly and more. More necessary. So, you know, it's it's a difficult thing to say pause and regroup and plan, but um. I've never felt, I wanna be supportive of the departments, but I also don't want the departments to feel like they have to walk around and defend the cost of these facilities. That's our job. Um, so pushback that you may receive, it's really, it's really, it's really council's. Job to help the public understand, you know, the planning and the the decisions that are, you know, arrived. At, that are part of planning. Um, nobody wants to see a million dollar price tag on anything, even if it's a good solution, nobody's happy with that. But, you know, we're gonna see escalating costs, and I think their construction costs, even the planning costs, are gonna escalate more rapidly than. Than we like to acknowledge. So there is a, there is a cost to waiting, and we've probably paid that and will continue to pay it. So I would be in favor of a planning phase and investment in that planning phase. I'm really glad to have a leadership that we have at the table and the consideration that's gonna have. By the commissions and staff members and and, uh, you know, Darren and Ryan over the years. And also lots of councils, you know, input over a long period of time. There's a lot of tenure to be. Um, made valuable in the planning process.
I don't think there's any harm in putting it in the budget for us to to have it there to review when we redo the budget. Not saying that it couldn't be taken on. If, if the forecast isn't looking good, but.
And and the one that, um, that I, you know, that I'm working out, this is kind of where it started, once I started looking at. Kind of potential cost or what we might do to make our building feasible for a long term is. If we can have a concrete plan from council saying that this is the direction we're going regardless of how long it's. You know, as long as we're moving forward and we have a plan moving forward, I'm willing to not invest money into this building, but if. We're going to not. Right. Pursue this long-term, then I need to invest the money that's in my capital program to try to make that building what it is. Um, which. When I, when I look at it, I don't think that's a good use of city money to invest money into that building, but I need to make. Our service at least, um. More operational efficient. And so, um, I'm okay with. Using my building, um, you know, for the next. Five years or so, as long as we're moving forward, but if we're not going to have that direction, then I need to invest that money into my building to make it more. Operational for us.
So I guess that's a big question, right? It's like, if we. Determine that we're gonna do something different, how many years is it gonna take for that to occur? I think that, I think that. Will help both. Brian and Darren with respect to what they can do with their buildings today. To meet their needs currently and then the long term. I think the one thing we need to think about too is is that it wasn't that long ago that. We were in a position of maybe not knowing where our police department was gonna be. And we cannot be in that position at all. We need to have that under our rope and not. Be able to, right now, the landlord's great, and we have a great relationship, but that can change. And I think that needs to be really focused as well when we consider this. Um. Can we like? Do a workshop and make a commitment to this and then we can then, you know, Darren can feel free to to. Do what he needs to do to get that story, but I know he is that, I know you have some immediate concern to solve those. Um, and if it's ten years, then maybe there's, I don't, how long it's gonna take, we don't know that. But if it's five years or. It's probably gonna be reasonably five years.
Minimum.
So. I mean, at that point. If we get done now, what we need to get done. Even though it's expensive band aid, maybe that's what it takes. We just gotta. We gotta commit to doing this. And I think too, if we do this and it's in across the street, like I've always dreamt of it being, I think it'll be impetus to make that happen. Even more.
Yeah, show them very much support a workshop and not, you know, for lots of input and whatever it takes for us to understand fully your needs, but it's. Walking through your facilities or whatever, you know, whatever helps people. Um, yeah, understanding your current and future needs.
I like, I like the vision of having the police, fire, ambulance, and city hall all in one location, one area. I mean. Think of a mosquito field. That's actually almost, uh, would seem like would fit that. But I mean, it's, uh. And I don't feel we should be spend, spending any more money on these older buildings if we can commit to something in basically five years.
Okay, so just to clarify. Dean, go ahead.
Oh, I I also feel that we, uh, this has been talked about for, as far as I know. Um, as long as I've been on the councils. And I think we, uh, we really need to. Do the plan and get on this and. Uh, speed ahead on it. Um. It's been too long in the waiting.
Thank you, Dean. So just for clarity. When are we thinking the workshop would be and what would be in the purpose of the workshop would be the tour? Fire, you probably should tour the leagues and see how great they. And tour ambulance and then. Walk through what we all know city hall. If it's necessary, I mean, I don't, yeah, you're already on, you feel and you wanna show us that you're needed in there so that we can be compelled to understand you, but we speak problems. You have a short-term rationale and a long-term. We could have workshop at the fire hall, that would be easy to do. But what would be the purpose of the workshop? How how would staff prepare for that? I think to discuss the timeline and understand how that impacts your service and to talk about the financial aspects of it, you know, get some. Even around the numbers that are, that exceed our imagination, just to start to work with assumptions. You know, if we've got any, it sounds like we have some, some estimates, like double them. I mean, that.
Well, I turned you an estimate, uh, it's not. But this, this is just, it's not what we would need. Um, it's a little bit different. But Newport built a new public safety building, and obviously they're a larger city, um, they're building relatively. Double what we might need. Uh, but they wrote the twenty-six thousand, six hundred fifty square foot building that completed in August of this year. Um, Brunnen offers to be, um. Uh, given the learning tour there. But they built that building for seven million two hundred twenty-four thousand dollars, at two, two hundred and seventy-one dollars per square. Obviously, like I said, their fire department man is ten minutes. That's way more than we would need for, you know, the fire department, but. Um, you know, if you want a starting point, you know, that's. Uh, um, there's another one, um, Wyndham, that they're uh, fire and EMS together. Um, and they, they're there for three hundred and two million dollars and at the current, yeah, three million, two hundred thousand dollars. Um, so I think somewhere in between there would be a, if you worked at combining everything, it would be about where we would be. And again, that's just throwing numbers without any real specifics.
At the particular construction site, but that was, I mean, they made a case for some of that. So, so if we look at a six million dollar facility. With some escalation based on our plans, you know, planning timeline, you know, maybe that allows Mike to advise us.
Are you, is the feedback that you need more discussion on the phase approach or you wanna do it all at once?
Well, I think it's a little bit of both, are we, why, is there an appetite? Why do we want to do it or just renovate city hall? Or public safety? I think we need to discuss that. I would like to know what the needs of everyone are, I mean, because I don't know what their ambulance needs are. I I probably can't guess what fighter is, but I have no clue what police would absolutely need and city hall would absolutely. To build into this. So then we kind of have, all right, yeah, we could probably please do all of this with like days. Yeah, I think there's just need to be a discussion.
Okay.
I I don't know if we necessarily need to say, well, what are the numbers right beside it?
Okay.
I mean, isn't that all?
Or or pragmatic, like an agreement about programmatically what we're trying to.
Okay, well, we've done, yeah, I keep saying we got, we got bids out right now, May is the bids coming in, but June or July initially. Would be feasible, but is. Tony and Darren and Ryan, do you guys think you could, well, I think you guys know easily the needs of your building. It'd be probably on my end. See, uh, to work with Mike and Bonnie on what is plugging that number in. Bookwise. Okay, and I actually even got a quote from USDA on what we were looking at. For an interest rate and a term on there, what they offer.
Might want to plug in ten million dollars, just to be.
That's what I think. I don't, you know, if you think five, make it ten. I mean, I I think.
Mike typically has taken like a present value cost and then. Adds a completion factor and that has, he was spot on in some of his stuff. The athletic field, he was spot on. So, yeah, well, or either way, can't plan for ten million in five years. So, okay.
And I think too, it's like, can we talk about this and talk about this? If we did it today, today's dollars versus what we're gonna, what we did it in. Ten years from now.
Or if it's done in five years ago dollars, okay, maybe about that. I mean, that is, that is the lesson, right? If we'd done it five years ago, we would, we would understand the difference between Wyndham's cost and our cost and we would. See it for what it is, and that is that we will not have a value, having a value conversation in ten years. Will be in a tough position. We'll have to, we sort of, I don't wanna sit corner ourselves in with, in a decision when we have the opportunity to do the right things.
And I had to go uh, with the the roof that Tony mentioned, when, when I was here in eleven, twelve, um, when I left the red binder. And that was one of the things that I identified um, as the capital improvement was the roof. Um, in two thousand nineteen, I believe, it went up to bid, uh, it never got done, and so now it's going, it's out for bid right now.
And part of that was the uncertainty about what was happening here. So. It's, it'll offer a lot of certainty for all of us. The future of this building is a community facility. Then it's fixed up appropriately that it's gonna be a community center.
We won't re-carpet it if it's gonna be.
It's gonna be repainted though.
Thank you for this. So are you comfortable with that workshop at, or at least possible timeframe given?
Yeah, not maybe, but.
Yeah, I look forward to that. Thanks for that suggestion. All right. We promise to give direction. That is a very important one. Keep coming up. All right, and now, and now Darren, maybe this changes, like you wanna share about Darren? Put you on the spot. Sometimes it's gotta go first, sometimes it's gotta go last.
Well, I guess, uh. You know, come along, going out looking for ideas, looking for options to put up a different building and. He said, I had all this money to myself, but I've been here a long time and uh. I just don't personally don't see it for a long time. And. Now the other, is maybe there's money out there, funds out there we can grab, maybe there isn't, um. I just know what our needs are right now for fire. We got a lot of big equipment. And uh, all I wanna do is, is get a. Okay to have the architect go through and give me an idea of what it costs to put that thirty by eight addition on. How do we know? I got one local guy that gave me a rough idea and uh. I can't go off of that because we still need the architect's final drawing to give you an idea of what we need for that, but uh. I don't see holding out ten years. For something we've tried for, this is probably my fourth, fifth time up here in the last ten years. So, and I'm still here.
What was your guess on cost of that addition again?
About two hundred eighty thousand dollars.
I feel like. We can move forward on the fire hall improvements, even if we're doing a facility of five, ten years down the road. I think the needs immediately here.
We talked about band aids now, but you know, but we do need to do this stuff. Ryan's got some housing issues with Scott with Russ. So, yeah, I'm.
You know, I'm not looking, uh, but it's two eighty thousand dollars, is that a band aid?
But we're not approving that now, we're just approving this, the discovery phase because we can't assume.
Right, yeah, I don't have no idea and I don't wanna go off of what I, uh, you know, somebody just telling me that this is what it's gonna cost. I want to, uh. You know, pay the thirty seven hundred dollars or whatever, have, you know, the architect come down and go on, I'll give you an idea of what, what the cost is gonna be for that addition.
And it's important for them to also understand that we're in a period of contemplation about whether that's a long-term solution or not. That will have, that their design. Uh, it's not gonna affect engineering, it's gotta be, you know, the code, et cetera, but if they're not trying to give you a building that lasts for the next four years. Feel like they have a different inclusion.
Yeah, when we have, in our building, I was a steel building, this is made the last twenty years. Um, we 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 did some stuff in there, we insulated it, did some. You know, I don't feel the building's in that bad a shape, but it's, you know, for the, for what it is and what it holds. Um, we have a lot of equipment in that building and uh, we just got some other, we're we're pushing, going further and further out of this storage. By by piling stuff in there and then we got stuff, like I said, the water and sewer plant and. We need to get some of this stuff, uh, more more room so we can utilize it and walk between trucks, you know.
With the thirty-five hundred, will that give you a finished architecture plan?
I believe it moved forward enough to give you a cost. Okay, that'll give you an idea of what the cost would be, and I think there was another amount in there that was closer to.
Yeah, right, so that's both and make seventy-five hundred.
No, it's a different firm, but yeah.
A different firm, okay.
Additional seventy-five hundred to manage the work if you move forward.
Gotcha, yeah, video, structure, administration.
Yeah, and I just wanna know, I guess basically I'm looking at is getting up. For sure, ballpark, figuring what this is gonna be, you know, so I'm not coming up here and saying I need. Twenty, you know, two hundred seventy thousand dollars, it comes at three hundred fifty thousand, right? I just wanna make sure we're doing the right thing, you know, cost-wise. So.
I'm wondering if they won't. Be able to have a finished set of architecture drawings for, cause it's to be able to give you the number they gotta have it on its design.
They do, because they come down, did it before, they did the same outfit, came down, did the other, so he didn't, he doesn't have to come down and do a lot of this because he's already done now. Most of the lightwork for it, so, he said it wouldn't be that, you know, that was my second bid, my first bid was like seventy, eight hundred bucks, but different outfit.
So. Uh, I believe that we go ahead and move forward with this one.
The thirty-five hundred.
The thirty-five hundred and uh, get, get the drawings, the estimate done and then we can go on from there.
And we should have that in time for.
Which will be very. They will first, you have second.
I'll second.
We have a person Ryan here, a second John, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Dean. Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Darren. Sorry to flip that order on you. We maybe had a different presentation. Okay, so now we have this ad, I don't wanna ask you anything, right? So I uh, just wanna give context, because we we probably shouldn't or can't take action as it wasn't close to our agenda, but we did. Um, follow up on what we committed to, which with the last month, the street commission heard a notion to. Add residential parking signage on Lawrence Boulevard from approximately the corner of Pembroke to, I think, the alley and then also on Bailey. Um, they debated that and came up with a um, with an acting was they proposed no Eagle Center signage. That wasn't acceptable, that didn't make sense to me, you know, and it didn't make sense for a couple of the people, I think, including Tony, we reached out to Eagle Center, it really didn't make sense then either. Didn't really satisfy the intent exactly of the original um, uh, item. So I, I took a step back and I thought, what is this really about? And it really, I, what I wanted immediately was I wanted Christie's take on this. Because this is just a small portion of a larger conversation about parking as it relates to all commercial use, but certainly. The expansion of the uh, riverfront, which is our project that we should be very proud of. And we need to have a revisiting in my estimation of the parking analysis that Christie conducted, I feel like it was twenty eighteen or so, so it's been some time. Um, I, please interject if I'm not summarizing this correctly, correctly, Christie, I will take the commission around the HP C even. My recollection of that, the conclusion was, you know, of the parking spaces um. Counted and the demand utilization uh, need analysis. We did not have a parking issue at that time that warranted the addition of additional parking, but it could occur. Well, we have a two hundred person amphitheater on the riverfront, we have a new dock and we have some additional business activity. And uh, we have the National Eagle Center currently in actively in the fundraising phase, uh, phase two, which. They will definitely wanna increase their visitorship. So I feel like the moment is now to have that conversation broadly. In talking with Christie about it, I explained to her this has kind of come to streets, she knew about it, she said that seems good to her, that makes sense to her. It made sense to me too, that's why I supported it. Um, in her, in her words, I, I think she said, I think it's a band aid. There's other considerations that also need to be made and I see it that way as well. So Chr- Christie uh, and I discussed kind of what would be next and it would be, you know, revisiting that Eagle Center's um, visitorship and what their, their plans are, their timing of. You know, we all know, we walk around this community, most of the time we have more than ample parking, there are pressure points on. Uh, peak, peak days, peak times. And so revisiting what those are with the Eagle Center, I don't know if there's any other stakeholders that would. Warrant that being revisited again. I know others were, you know, we talked about St. Felix and their parking during. Mass times, but you know, that's the big change, that we, we really added a huge amenity on the riverfront and um, we have really revisited that data. So that's what I would like to see happen. I also really don't wanna take the authority away from the streets to make that distinction. I think that that's where it belongs initially. It it has to come to council fine, but you know, with with staff's involvement, I'd like to let them revisit this notion of signage because as I. You know, mentioned, I see it as one part of this. Um, and then if it grows beyond, um, some of the streets takes care of. You know, then council gets involved. I think the timing is perfect. We have been so focused on the. Physical aspects of the streets gate, you know, the street reconstruction, the streets gate and the pay, the payment and the financing, but we will need to do wayfinding and that is budgeted in the street reconstruction. And we wanna do that right, because as we know, there are prime places to park and walk along our beautiful riverfront on your way to the Eagle Center. Or Lawrence Boulevard or any of the fast up and downtown, but frankly, wherever you're going, but we don't have a signage for that. And so. Um, that consideration will be, will be impacted by what Christie sees from a, from a planning perspective. Do you wanna give any other context to that, Christie?
No, I thought that was great, but um, yeah, I, we, we didn't, uh, us, we didn't provide you guys with the, the kind of the parking memo. Or the parking study we did back in November twenty eight, two thousand eighteen to the. Study for, or the conversation for this evening, but it tried to kind of use the raw data. Um, plus assumptions based on land use. Um, and I think kind of the, another key to that is trying to understand. Weekday versus peak kind of traffic. And then as we look particularly to the Lawrence Boulevard issue, kind of that hit the. Street commission this last week, I think it's also kind of important to determine how on earth do we. Try to differentiate between the residential uses and the commercial uses. And try to keep residential folks in a residential feel in neighborhood and not have kind of overflow peak parking happening there and. Yet in the same hand, how do we kind of manage the peaks for things that are happening, happening in the downtown area? And and we've had some complexities as Mayor and I have chatted about. Um, some things that'll work, some things that will don't work when the wayfinding comes up and about. My recommendation is to try to reach out to the National Eagle Center this week, um, try to talk with Annette and say what's. What's being programmed this spring, what's being programmed this summer and try to understand when those peak moments are going to occur. And try to direct those folks to parking areas that aren't residential in nature. And then, you know, do some, just, just a good, healthy update to this plan. So we kind of have some assumptions about. Um, I think we had the National Eagle Center gave us, you know, median attendance, average attendance, peak attendance and when those. When that happened throughout the year and I think spring's a big time for them. So we can update those numbers and then revisit this. We really did show that we were plus or minus about fifty parking stalls from what we needed in the study. But that was done in two thousand eighteen, so I'd love to refresh that. Um, and again. Um, as we look at the street project too, to have a particular eye on how do we help the residential folks stay residential in character. While still developing and supporting the commercial, even if they're within each other's blocks. That's, that's a difficult thing to do, but I think we can try to put. Some, some, you know, something to that to try to help each of those. Different districts, particularly at the line of when they are, to to make them function for each i- in in their own land use.
I just wanna clarify, so Jeff and Tony and Jay, so on the streets commission, you guys, the still on the table was this. Residential only parking that was discussed?
It was discussed and just like it wasn't on our agenda, I just urge that they probably shouldn't take action without something that's supposed to be the agenda. It's not an emergency. And so I think that consideration that Christie provides and that the streets commission can digest is valuable. To their discussion. I think they were almost ready to make a motion this morning, but I think for, you know, just due process, I think it should be on the agenda and then they can. Act with the information that that we gained from this.
Then, then that's one end. It would be on their agenda, it was residential only, parking only.
Great.
Can you guys give them our last thing to move forward with?
Experience back with the authority, revisit this with the information that I don't think was a part of the initial. Discussion. It just, it just like clicked for me that like we, we have a big new amenity. We've added a big new amenity, we should at least be revisiting for that reason, if not to the with, the longstanding, you know, kind of additional. Current use that that we're seeing, um, because of, because of existing demand apart, so. Is that okay with you, Tony?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any comments?
I think it's one to go. Um, the idea of. Try to make it residential only, how are we gonna police that?
So.
Just like we give it to.
Yeah, you know, I think the visual deterrent aspect of it is important, you know, and we've had some, some street commissioners ask, well, if I run a business, let's say I'm servicing somebody's. Uh, their utilities in their home, my, my truck is coming. Well, if somebody complains about that, that's residential use. So if somebody comes to you. It's not a, that's not a problem. You know, if you wanna cruise down and eat your lunch on Lawrence Boulevard, which people do, and it's marvelous. That's not a problem, that, you know, so residential meaning residential to the community. Not, I'm here for this commercial activity and I need to park. So. Residential parking, I think, is that like, you agree with Christie, is that?
For sure, for sure. And I think, yeah, again, I don't, I get that we're not gonna be policing this, but. At least the folks who want to do the right thing, I, I think you gave us the example of someone who was parking on Lo- Lawrence Boulevard to visit. Eagle Center was maybe kind of looking around going, can we really park here? What do we, you know, and if, if we put that sign that says residential use. At least those folks will choose another parking stall.
Yes.
And it's a good way to find it for.
And good way.
Personally, when she said it, I was thinking Lawrence Boulevard residents is only, and it was explaining to me only, but does that mean like. I'm from the city of Kellogg or I'm from the town of Greenfield, so. It's just.
That's not where the parking demand's coming from, so that's not, okay.
But it's gonna just say residential parking only, okay.
Yeah.
I got it, Colin.
Thanks, Dean, go ahead. Yep.
Uh, my only concern about this whole uh, residential parking thing is. Up on the west side during the summertime, we have all these boat tractors and stuff. And I can see those citizens. Hey, we want residential parking signs in our place too. Um, or we want them down by St. Felix. We want them down by the uh, Slippery's. Um, I, I, I'm not sure you would stop with this.
I think there was some discussion about the Marina, there is a street that is residential parking only that felt a lot of pressure and dead end or something. So there's, that is a, that is a existing precedent there. Um, and then Tony, did you describe, Tony, over on, on the upriver side of Malone, is it? There's no parking on that side or is, can't remember, there's a street where that. There's no parking on that side or is, I can't remember, there's a street where that, it appears that that has been the case and that has been addressed with a restriction on parking.
Yeah, there was a lot of whole traffic that was being parked in there and they were leaving their boats there, so. I think that's what it was before I was here. Um, the other one, we've had to do no parking on one side of uh, I think it's Church Avenue going up from. Um. I think it's Revival Park, Ice Park, yeah, because they were coming out and they parked right there and if you got parking on both sides, you can't get through. Um, those are the only two, there's different spots for no parking around, but the the residential parking only is just that one.
The other piece, Dean, that's come up, and I guess I just never really noticed, but it's it's already a narrower street and it had no curb feature to. Prevent people from not only parking, but parking up on the brass. So. There's there's other ways Christie envisioned might, you know, we might need to consider for that particular street. It's also a designated major trail route. So it has a lot of pedestrian pressure on it. It's really, it serves multiple purposes. And so I think it is a slight, there's other streets where there's some multi, you know, multi-use function, but it's 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 unique in that aspect. It's narrower and has three, at least three demands on it.
And one one other thing, Christie, I think Jay had said at the meeting that. Uh, the parking study that was done in the past really had nothing to do with Lawrence Boulevard. So maybe we wanna do. A radius of the Eagle Center instead of just a business district.
For sure.
You know, that's included, uh, whether it was, I'm not sure myself, but. No, I don't think it was. I think that was.
Yeah, we we did, but the Eagle Center is really has has expanded and certainly does. Bigger events, so I needed to reach out to Annette and include an update. Um, specifically for the Eagle Center.
Anything further on that item? Those will see it. Informed by a staff report and updated some analysis that's a few years old and then expect streets to have it again.
Yep.
All right. Very good. All right, with that, um, I'd like to read the uh donation and accept a resolution to accept them. To the library, twenty five dollars in memory of Bunny Woodley, fifty dollars in memory. Can you hear me, Dean?
What about the mining ordinance? It's on the agenda.
No, we moved it up.
We moved it up.
Oh, sorry.
We had some members of the public here who were sitting waiting to have that item, so we made the courtesy of making that general business one.
Yeah, I'm jumping all over.
That, I know, me too. At least it's not me, because usually it's me, so. All right, um, also to the library in memory of Bunny Woodley, fifty dollars. To the athletic field complex, ten thousand dollars from John Raisdale, in memory of Steel Dick. Twenty five dollars from Margaret and Thomas Anderson, fifty dollars from Carol Atkinson's apple, one hundred dollars from Scott's Halloween, twenty five dollars from Susan and Stephen Borak. Twenty five from Jerry Enjants. That looks like an Norwegian name. I should be able to announce that. Shetscall. And forty dollars from Jim and Cleen Hammer, twenty five dollars from Keaton and Mary Lovejoy, a hundred dollars from Sharon and Jan Tims. Ten dollars from Marjorie Walrich and Walrick and fifty dollars from Jan and Bill Brunkow and thirty dollars from Kathleen Nelson. Do we have a motion to accept the donations? We heard it, we heard it at the same time. I heard Tim's, my writer's probably better as first and second by. Uh, right, Jeff, do we have any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Dean, I'm sure that wasn't I, yes. All right, and is that any other announcements or we can have a motion to adjourn? Very good. I heard Brian first, Dean second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Thank you all.